All right, good evening, everyone. I show that it's six o'clock. So with that, we'll take roll call.
Jason Fry is absent.
We do have a quorum, so we'll call the Wabash City School Board meeting for Monday, December 5th, 2022 to order. Will everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin each Wabash City School Board meeting by reading the Wabash City Schools' mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in the global community. Like to welcome everybody here tonight. Do we have any recognitions?
Tonight, we do have as visitors Girl Scout Troop 5-1-2-2-8. So we would like to welcome them to our meeting.
Welcome.
Hello.
All right. We do have a couple of revisions to the agenda. One is to approve revision I to the board agenda, which is a student presentation on school safety, and then to move that item from item I on the agenda to item C. I would accept a motion on the revisions.
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor of approving the revisions to the agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. At this point, I'd like to ask anybody if they would like to comment on any of the agenda items tonight. And when we get to that point, we will give you the opportunity. Is there anybody? All right, hearing none, we'll continue. Consent agenda, we have the minutes from our November 21st, 2022 meeting. Claims, donations, and we do not have financials since this is the first meeting of the month. Would accept a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion second. Any discussion on consent agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next scheduled board meeting will be Monday, December 19th, 2022, at Wabash City Hall, 202 South Wabash Street, Wabash, Indiana, at 6:00 PM. We have a few items of communications. There is no old business, new business. We have Wabash High School Student Council update.
Hello. So we missed last month because it just didn't work out. We have people sick and... Are you in Japan? Not yet? Okay, well, we had a lot of things going on, so we're gonna kind of catch you up over the past two months. But we'll start out by letting you know.
So we had our food drive, our, or the Lighthouse mission. Do you know what we're doing today?
Yeah, it should be on the slides.
It's taking a little while. Well, let's just do this. Okay. So we had over 3,000 items donated and raised around $600. Our top donor was Trevor Heron. He's a sophomore at our school. And when we got to fish, the shells were pretty much barren, but with our help, we filled them. We filled the bus as well as Mrs. Oswald's truck, Mrs. Oswald's car, full of fish. So as you can see, we had our office pretty full of stuff.
And this year for the fish food drive, we tried to, we switched it up a little bit. Typically, it's just advisory class versus like the whole school. But this year, we took two advisory classes and we paired them up. So it was just an advisory over an advisory to hopefully get more people encouraged. And instead of having one overall winner, we would have 10 so that more kids would hopefully get involved. And I think we had a pretty good turnout for this year, especially with how expensive food is. But yes, it was a really great time. Okay.
This year, we held our annual blood drive on November 39th. And 26 people participated and donated blood. And this was a mix of students and teachers. And all together, we real collected 18 bags we donated to the red course.
All right. And the most recent...
I tried to get that thing.
Because Hannah sent it to me this morning. So our most recent thing is a red for Riley. And the girls' basketball team did an awesome job raising money for Riley's Children Hospital. I'm sure Mr. Stone can probably tell you a lot about it, but there was a bet between the girls and him that if they won a game, he would donate $25. And if they lost, the girls had to come up with $20. And if they were able to raise $300, he would dye his hair red. And then at the boys' basketball game this past Friday night, if they raised $100, he would wear it for their next game. And they ended up raising $400 that night, which was pretty incredible. And so you can scroll down, and there's some more pictures. Yes. It was entertaining. So this week, to continue that, our school is kind of having like a spirit where we are doing... Oh, well, there was a slide in there showing stuff, but it must have not updated. Anyway, so we're having a pie-in-the-face competition. So there are 12 different teachers who have said that they would accept the honors of getting, put a pie in their face. And so throughout the week, students can donate 50 cents as a vote. And so whichever, I don't know if it just won. I think there might, is it the top three teachers? I don't know exactly, but there's gonna be teachers getting pies in the face. So that's really awesome. And then throughout the week, we are having spirit days. So today was Red Out, tomorrow is Disney Day, Wednesday is Wacky Wednesday, Thursday is Anything for the Backpack Day. We had that last year for a paying sports spectacular. And we had some pretty interesting people. One person brought like a canoe and carried it around the whole day. And then Friday is just a pasty, black and orange. And so again, Red Riley Spirit Week is this week. Christmas Spirit Week will be coming up for the last three days before Christmas break. We will have the toy drive, where we have a toy bin. And a lot of times, teachers will offer extra credit. Or I know one year, the math department did like breakfast for the students who donated so much. So that's coming up. And then finals, which I'm sure most people are looking forward to. But so that's all we have for you. Oh, we have 107 days left. That's what's been happening at Wabash High School. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Right. Next, we have a presentation by Bill Chittenden and students that participate in the Kaki Hashi Project in Japan. I don't know if I pronounced that right, but...
All right. Give me everybody. So yes, I think we have a show as well. Thank you. Yeah, we, Wabash High School was very, very lucky in being chosen by the Japanese government and the Consulate General of Chicago to participate in the Kaki Hashi program. This is a project that seeks to build connections between Japan and other countries throughout the world, US, Canada, European countries, and some in Southeast Asia as well, and Australia. So yes, we were chosen to participate in this program and take nine students to Japan, all expenses paid, our food, our lodging, our flights, very generous. And I had to pick nine students out of all of my Japanese classes, which was not an easy task. We stayed there for nine days. As I said, there were nine students. We were in Tokyo for, I would say, a majority of the trip. But four days, we spent in Tochigi Prefecture, which is about two and a half hours north of Tokyo. More countryside, more, closer to Indiana. But is that a bit more than home in Beijing? Okay, so yes, that is, those are the participants and my beautiful face. Can you scroll down, please? Thanks. Do you have any other stuff? You want to scroll down?
So like before we visited Japan, I mean, you kind of have like this sense that it's like a very like strict and like kind of uptight kind of culture for the most part. You know, they're very clean and like they have a lot of, they're very traditional. And part of it is true, but for the most part, I didn't, I know. I feel like my views on it changed a lot after having gone, so yeah.
In what way?
It's... I don't know, they have a lot more fun than I thought they did. And they're very welcoming and very warm people, which not that I didn't expect that. I just wasn't thinking of that when I thought of Japan for the most part, so yeah.
Please scroll down here, please. Anyone? No? Scroll down again, please. So I'll talk. So we would, the itinerary is incredibly busy. We had a lot of stuff to do. They're packed, it's full. We were always on the move. We visited the DIA building, just kind of like, this is the House of Representatives, kind of like our Congress. So students were able to check that out. And I mean, have you guys been on the DC trip? No, never mind. Bet it's the Japanese government, all right. We were able to see that. That was my first time seeing that. It was very, very cool experience. Students, when we were staying in Tochigi, they had a homestay, not overnight because of COVID. Japan is still very much wearing masks and social distancing and stuff like that. So you're able to go on a homestay for one day, one full day with a Japanese family. I was not there, the Japanese was not there. They were kind of experiencing Japanese life for real. And this was more rural. Like, this is not in Tokyo, this is in Tochigi. You guys have any impressions of your homestay, or? Nah?
What did they do on the homestays? Like, what was the typical day like?
You have a slide up?
Okay.
We also visited a Japanese school, Kaitzumia Kaizei Josikoko, which is an all-girls high school in Tochigi, in the capital, Kaitzumia. And basically, we gave, you guys, they gave a presentation to the Japanese students about Wabash High School and kind of what we do, what clubs we have, what sports we have. And the students traded and kind of showed us what clubs they have and stuff. And you guys were able to practice calligraphy. Bottom right, writing calligraphy. What else were you guys able to do? Iasui, katsukado, kuwari, like pinnytail and donkey. Koto, Japanese art, were able to play Japanese, were playing Japanese art? Furigami? Yeah. You guys were able, they were able to do a lot of cool cultural stuff, being taught by actual Japanese students. And I'm sure you guys traded your SMS, social media stuff with them. Have you been talking in the middle? Yes and no? There you go. I was not in homestay, so you guys gotta hear something.
We, there were some students who, at their homestay, was able to make sushi. Hope was a part of that. I think most of us does it in a temple or a shrine with our homestay families. Me and Emily Lee went to an aquarium with our homestay person. Others went to a farmer's market. And Devin and Bobby were able to play...
Upfella.
Whatever that is.
How did the farmer's market differ from the one that we have here in Wabash?
Anybody here go to the farmer's market? That is why I didn't want...
Okay.
Or students that aren't here. Japanese farmer's markets, they're a little bit different as I'd say we have one, a haw, how often do we hold? Once a week? These farmer's markets are around, all the time, every day we can go. And local farmers will bring their produce and stuff just whenever they want to and travel there. Kind of a lot of these roles we do. And you guys were able to kind of experience and see a lot of different kind of the traditional cultural religious aspects of Japan by visiting some Buddhist temples and a lot of shinto shrines. Yeah, I think some students bought omomori, little charms and stuff like that. That's a big slide. Visited the museum that we visited in Tochigi Prefecture. We went to their museum where we were actually on the Japanese news, which was pretty cool. I recorded it in a hotel room on my cell phone that night. Yeah, I wasn't really around for most of the tour because I was writing cue cards for the little interview we had at the end. But did you guys enjoy the... Yeah? I really didn't see anything in there because I was busy. Okay. Those are some quotes. I think Hope you kind of touched on that a little bit. Um, yeah, you want to read those? You don't have to read them all, but you can read.
Questions about seeing traditional shines and learning about, are you clapping, right? And how respectful people are and are very welcoming, even though we do not speak a lot of Japanese, people were still trying to understand what we were saying. And some people visited Onsen and thought they were very pretty and they were wanting to go to. And then that, going to the homestay was fun and it was nice to see what actually people who actually live in under the walls and live their houses were like.
Thank you. So Onsen, those are Japanese hot springs, natural hot springs. They built the Ryokan Japanese Sailing. And yeah, it's very, enjoy the looks here. Some students are enjoying it. We ate a lot of food. Yeah. When we were in, the bottom left picture is gyoza, or pot stickers, I guess we would call them here, dumplings. Gyoza. And we went to Kaitzumia, and that's their famous food there. So I think everywhere we went, we were able to try some really unique foods that we don't have here. Was it your first time trying a lot of those foods?
No.
Is that like real ramen or?
That's real. Yeah, that's, that's real. I think so.
Okay.
Very sorry.
Sorry, guys.
No, that's good.
Oh, we went to Harajuku, which is like the fashion district of Tokyo. Went downtown. And those crepes there you see on the right are very famous in Harajuku. A lot of students, I think almost everybody ate a crepe. Almost everybody. It's fun to see, get to explore this city a little bit. People?
I'm gonna just say that lots of people, well, also a range of things, like is gonna be very welcoming toward you even if you're a foreigner. Respect is just so implemented in the culture that it's not really something they need about. Just, that's just how you treat people. So like when I went to the school, it was smiles and everybody was just friendly and kind of good. So that was really nice to see.
Yeah, when I, I actually was visiting the homestays and just walking around the school, on the chatroom. So I'm just checking on everybody. And yeah, there is a huge language barrier there, but the communication was still very complex. Everybody was very eager to find out more about each other and figure it out. A lot of Google Translate. Everyone touch on this or you don't want to move on? Yeah? One more down, please. Thank you. This is the beginning of the... No. A little bit more, please. This is Toshoku, by the way. It's a very famous, I don't want to get into a whole history lecture or anything, but very famous shrines and temples we visited have a lot of historical significance in Japan. Building the bridge. It's good. So part of this program, the Kaki Hashi program, since we were chosen, how we kind of pay back them, their kindness, is by sharing our story and with an action plan, something that when we get back to the US, we're going to implement and share our experience. And this is, I guess, part of it. But I believe Erin will be sharing what our students came up with to do for their action plan.
So we will be making a school advisory video that students can watch during homeroom to just find out what we did. We will be setting up a Blue Cap First Friday and do activities for people and share with our family and friends, our fundings, and talk about what we did. And we've all been posting on social media to show followers what we've been doing. So we want to do this because Wabash is not very diverse and lots of people in the community don't understand Japanese culture. And they usually just see it through like Americanized versions. And we wanted to show people what Japan is really like, to help people get past their biases and gain an understanding of Japanese culture and just so they can learn the Japanese really correctly. We will be doing a Blue Cap First Friday of March of 2023 and presenting during our school's advisory period. And we will be doing this all within the first three months, from the 10th to 20th.
We chose March because it won't be so cold maybe. This is just to who, which is everybody that's willing to listen. Just thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have a student presentation on school safety.
Okay, so for the school safety presentation, I just want to give you a little bit of background knowledge so that you understand how this came about. I teach speech to sophomores at the high school and... Go ahead. No, it's fine. I'm used to technical difficulties, you know? And one of the things that I asked the students to do, I hear a lot of complaining in the days. And so I said, you know what? Let's just figure out what we need to do then to make this a better place. And so I gave them a budget of $25,000 hypothetical dollars because nobody has that kind of money. And I said to them, figure out what you would like to fix about our school. Come up with a logical idea that can address it and then come up with a budget and how you, and a timeline for how you're going to implement this.
I'm sure it will.
There are, were phenomenal ideas. And each class then voted for which presentation they felt best represented their class. And for the sixth period class, these four have a presentation that revolves around school safety. And so they are here to speak because we, our goal is to use our voices to hopefully bring about better change and to empower our students in the process of improving our schools. And I hope that you enjoy their presentation. I'm very proud of them. Good job. There you go. Knock it out.
Hello, everyone. I'm Colton Sellers.
I'm Paige Irwin.
I'm Yaga Stumbo.
I'm Madison White.
And this is vaping in schools.
Okay, so basically, the problem, the issue is that we have three like main restrooms. And so to make sure that you have time to use restroom before class, that way you're not going during class and missing stuff, like if you're in the middle of a lesson and you're in the restroom. You try to go before, but the issue is that there are people that like to go in there and vape, which I'm sure we're all aware of, and which leads to lines and taking up our four-minute passing period, making us tardy to class. And with only three restrooms, it gets very crowded. So you go in there and you're trying to use the restroom and wash your hands and get out as fast as you possibly can and then trying to make it to class, whether you're in the basement or you're upstairs. It's very stressful. And I know, because I've experienced it, you're trying to either go before class or you're trying to get to your class and tell your teacher, hey, like I need to use restroom. And then you have to go, but there's people just hanging out in there vaping and doing whatever, like it's a study hall.
Okay, so about 2.5 million middle school and high school students are currently vaping. And 14.1% is high school students and 3.3% is middle school students. So the bottom pictures are different types of vapes that are used. And there's also ones that are like smokeless vapes or like ones that are wax vapes. And they have ones that have like THC in it, so it's not just what you can find in like the drawers and things like that.
All right, so our one solution that we have is install these vape detectors that I have right here. And all three of those bathrooms that we talked about, there is a gender neutral bathroom at our school. We can also install one in with a single-use bathroom. There's only one of them that is open to the students. These can't, these vape detectors, they pick up levels of chemicals. So when you put it in the air, the smokeless vapes do not do as well because obviously there's no smoke coming out or anything for it to pick up. It doesn't pick up fire, so it's not like a smoke detector. It doesn't ding, it doesn't go off. It sends like push notifications to building administrators and things like that. It connects to the internet, so it will ping with different things. So if obviously if you don't have wifi, this won't work. It syncs two cameras that are outside of the bathroom. So if you have a camera pointed right at the entrance or around the hallway that the entrance to the bathroom is in, when it pings that there is vaping going on in there, it will pick it up and it'll mark, bookmark the camera to where you can have it save that footage and then it can push that to whoever's phones for them to be able to look at it. So the, oh, you're getting first.
Okay.
So to continue on with like budgeting and stuff, so $1,500 to $2,000 per unit, we would need five units if we were wanting to do the four bathrooms we talked about. And then if we can get the boys another bathroom to put in one of those. And then for internet cable cost is in between 10 cents to a dollar and $1,500 per floor.
All right, so the, one of the problems that we have is that we talked to a few different people at our building about this. They had said that other schools in the county have written tickets about vaping, which they have not been enforced by the prosecutor's office. So they could write you a vape, or not write you a vape, write you a ticket. You could go to the prosecutor's office and it would just be a slap on the wrist, nothing would happen. You would just go there and you would just be set free. There'd be no consequences and it'd be treated as a minor infraction and it would be not enforced. So along with putting these in, we have to get on board with the prosecutor's office to get some type of collaboration in that, in that realm of things. So thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for doing the presentation. What made you choose this as your topic?
Mainly, I think it was like, because it took a lot of brainstorming because we weren't like, we didn't just come into this project and we're like, this is what we're gonna do. We all like put in our ideas and then we all settled down on, with Colton's input of the boys' restroom and with our input of the girls' restroom, we came down that it's a very big problem that we all like use, like that we have to deal with. And it's the, like how I said, getting tardy to class. And your teachers are like, you come in late, they're like, well, where were you? And you're trying to explain to them, I was in the restroom, but the lines are long. And so we were all like, this is a good topic fit.
And I was very supportive of it because I oftentimes have to delay the start of class up to about five minutes, waiting on girls to get out of the restroom, not through any of their own fault, but because of the campers and the stalls. And also, lots of kids have taken to planning their bathroom breaks for somewhere in the middle of class so that they do not have to even be in the bathroom when... so that they do not have to even be in the bathroom when all of that is occurring. They just avoid the crowds by asking to go after usually, you know, lecture right at the start of work time. So they're, they're having to adjust their lives, the rule of life in kids are having to adjust their lives and use of their school building around these people who are essentially holding them hostage by camping in the restroom. And just one more noteworthy thing, something that we talked about today is that with alcohol at our school, it is a regulated substance, of course, and only available to those that are over 21. If you are caught with alcohol on school grounds or drugs on school grounds, you're immediately sent for expulsion. But with vaping, which is only available to those that are over 21, we write tickets or do discipline. And it would be nice if we could give our school administrators or our SRO a little more powerful control that if we're going to have a substance that's banned over 21 and that's the law of the land and we should enforce it the way we do the other substances that are also banned. And, and the kids came up with that idea as well, so. We hope that if money ever does become available, that you would consider installing these. The kids actively stopped grants as well, and we'd like to let you know that Casey's General Store does offer a grant every year, beginning in the beginning of November, and Emily has a one-month program from November 1st to November 30th. They take school improvement grant applications and they can award up to $50,000. And we're asking for, what, about $7,000?
Seven.
Yeah, seven to eight with the install and the internet cable and making sure that cameras can stay. Wonderful.
I will let the, the students know that last year we did join a lawsuit against Jewel. And I actually called the attorney about a week or two ago because I thought, oh, we haven't heard anything from them. And the cases that were the first cases that would probably determine whether or not there would be settlements, out-of-court settlements, have been continued until the spring of this coming year. So there could be a possibility through that Jewel lawsuit that we would get a settlement and that would be the board's decision to use that funds, those funds. And this was something that we had already talked about, that it was something I think Officer Hipkin, we've talked about potentially being able to use those funds to do something like that.
Thank you for putting the work.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. Item D, approve the 2023 Support Personnel Handbook and a 1% raise for positions not addressed already. Motion, second discussion.
Many of our support personnel have already received raises for this year. Those that have not will receive a 1% raise, which is in line with what administrators received. And Mr. Stone can share any more information.
In the past, we always did this back at the start of school about the same time we did teachers. Dr. Sibley thought it would be better if we started doing this on the calendar year, so that's why it is effective January 1st. And moving forward, we will do it this time of year, every year, and it'll be effective January 1st. So it also helps our personnel department because they don't have to try to redo everyone's contract at the same time. Because before she was trying to redo teachers and all her non-certified people at the same time. So this will be the timeline, we'll do this from now on.
It says that this is for positions not already addressed.
Well, there's, some in the handbook already are addressed. And, and so like, it'll say, we changed the pay of the secretaries or whatever. But for like our custodial staff, they'll get a 1% rate because we didn't change their starting pay or their, their pay at all. So the ones that were not addressed in the handbook will get 1%. The ones who were addressed in the handbook also got 1%, it's just addressed in the handbook differently. So that way everyone's getting 1%.
But those that haven't been addressed already know that they will be getting it addressed, so they know to look for it on their pay after.
Yeah. There's, and, and some people, like cafeteria was taken care of back in the aughts. And so we did not change that again. They, they were already taken care of.
And I believe that employees will see this in the second pay in January.
Any other discussion? Not all those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve Elizabeth Burns for Vernon Manor teacher stipend of $2,000 per semester for the 2022-2023 school year. Motion, second discussion.
Mrs. Burns has been spending two hours of her day at Vernon Manor for the students that are there that cannot come to the high school. Our teacher from last year resigned and Mr. Blossom, working with Mrs. Higgins at area programming, they were able to create a plan that did not require us to fill that open position. This stipend covers the additional planning and travel to and from Vernon Manor.
All those in favor of approving the stipend indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item F, approve the following leave requests. FMLA request from Nick Hostetler from November 21st through December 21st, 2022. Leave request from Catherine Carter from December 5th through the 16th, 2022. Motion, second discussion.
I recommend that the board approve both of these leave requests.
All those in favor of approving the leave requests indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item G, accept resignation from the following classified employees. Jacoby Griffith as part-time custodian at Wabash Middle School, Wabash High School, effective December 2nd, 2022. Patsy Arwood as cafeteria employee, effective December 1st, 2022. Brenda Driscoll as cafeteria employee, effective December 21st, 2022. Have a motion, second discussion.
We'd like to thank these individuals for their time and service to Wabash City Schools and we wish them the best of luck in the future.
All those in favor of accepting the resignations indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item H, approve recommendation to hire the following classified staff. Brandy Gidley as Wabash Middle School paraprofessional at a rate of $11 per hour for under 30 hours per week, effective December 9th, 2022. Erica Cornette as Wabash High School study hall paraprofessional at a rate of $11.47 per hour, not to exceed 29.75 hours per week, effective December 6th, 2022. Motion, second discussion.
We are pleased to welcome Ms. Gidley and Mrs. Cornette to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item I, approve the following athletic coaches for 2022-2023. Wabash High School wrestling volunteer, David Porter. Motion, second discussion.
We want to say thank you to Mr. Porter for his willingness to volunteer in our wrestling program.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
Two weeks ago, we wrapped up our United Fund campaign. As a district, we raised our overall donation by 40% and surpassed our goal of $2,000. We ended with a total donation of $2,305. We had a cookies and milk giveaway for all that participated. And today, six individuals received a dozen chocolate chip or ice sugar cookies that were made by me and a quart of milk, and these were all a part of my contribution to the campaign. On Friday, we kicked off our Riley Kids Caring and Sharing fundraiser. They've already shared this, the girls' basketball team collected $300, got to dye Coach Stone's hair. We all got a good, good laugh at the game on Friday. The girls were able to collect another $404. I know one of the girls was really impressed that when they were going around with the bucket, some of the opposing fans came and donated, so we really appreciate that. So we have collected $704.25. Our goal is to collect $1 per student. And so thanks to our girls' basketball team, we are well on our way to doing that. And I look forward to seeing some pies in the face at the end of the month. And in the next few weeks, we have several holiday events that will be taking place and I'm looking forward to attending those.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Sibley? If not, items from Chief Business Officer, Mr. Stone.
I think it's very funny how all this happened to me and all the ideas came from Dr. Sibley. Why don't you grow your hair out and have your girls make a deal with you? Hey, why don't you dye it red and, and make some more money? And then, of course, I had to shave it all off because it was pink. And so I don't know how it all happened to me, you know, all the ideas came from that way.
Maybe next year we'll dye my hair red.
No, I'm very proud of our girls. They did a good job. And then I do think they were shocked at how quickly they could make another $400, I had to attend the game on Saturday, but that's because a lot of people thought it was funny for me to have to coach in red hair. But they did a great job. It was a great start to the fundraiser, very worthy cause. Certainly, we've had students touched by this and Riley's been a big help to those families, so it's a great cause. And so it was, it was a good thing and, and it's the first time I haven't had hair in 24 years, so I had to shave it all off because it was hideous. Mr. Gally's sending out pictures of me looking like Willie, the groundskeeper from The Simpsons. And everyone got a nice chuckle, so it was good. Hopefully, we'll raise well over the $1,400. I think we're on our way to that, so it's a very good cause.
All right, any questions for Mr. Stone? Not items from administrators.
I'm gonna have to talk with my fellow administrators about Monday night. First off, I don't know where you get that fire engine red dye, but that was red. There's no doubt about that. But would like to thank Coach Stone and the girls for getting everything off and started on such a great start. And hopefully it'll take some of the pressure off of me to get pie in the face on, on Friday, so. No, you, you saw tonight, everything that's going on at the high school. I mean, we've got, we've got kids on the other side of the world in Japan going out telling, you know, other cultures about Wabash, Indiana and Wabash High School and what we have to offer. You know, we've got these, these great young Apaches here coming in, seeing how school board works, learning how it happens. We've got students who are taking charge of their building, you know, and wanting better facilities. And it, it's just amazing things that are going on for us and I couldn't be more proud, proud of our kids. We are down to 12 days. That is it, 12 days. Four of those days are going to be exams. Our exams will be that Friday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the last four days. We've got choir concert this week that's going to go off. That would be the middle school and high school choirs. Last week was Bannon Orchestra. It was a great concert if you didn't have the opportunity to go. We've got, again, the Red for Riley happening. Next Tuesday, I think it is, our sophomores are going to Hartland Career Center to check things out. So even though we've got the end of the semester coming closer and inside, we understand, and our students are doing a great job of this, they understand, we still got work to do. We, we've still got work to do. Our teachers understand we still got work to do and we're, we're going to be doing it right up till the very end. The high school is, like I always say, we're, we're rolling along. You know, it's, it's a training and once it gets moving at that start of the year, it doesn't stop till May. But that's it, that's where we're at and love to see you guys there for the pie in the face. Come on down. Vote early so you get the throw.
Do you know who's leading right now?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's myself. Surprise there, but Mr. Neville, Mr. Neville might be a really close second right there. I was hoping today I'm leading.
As a former assistant principal, I will say you probably will win.
I don't know, if you get a chance to come to the high school and see, I did try to hide my face in the picture because I did make a big fat head of Josh. Put it on a stick and I held it in front of you when the picture was taken, but I don't think they're buying this.
All right. Items from visitors, anybody have anything tonight? If not, items from board members.
Thank you to the Girl Scouts for coming. I hope you had fun. And again, like always, thanks to the high school kids for coming, the student council, the kids from Japan. And thank you for your presentation. I know that vaping is a serious problem. I'm glad that she reminded us of that lawsuit because I forgot about that, actually. And hopefully, we can get some money to maybe make that plan in place because that would be great. We will look into that. So thank you.
Stephen?
Girl Scouts, get any questions? I know you're here for your bad badges. Any questions about meetings or anything?
I'm here for, we're finishing up our government and our democracy badge and we're going to attend a public meeting. And so this was the easiest one for us to all get to, so we appreciate allowing us to be here.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for choosing our meeting.
Almost over, that's what time is.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
But other than that, Colton, thank you for bringing, for coming in. You guys did the work. I really appreciate you guys researching and presenting. It's not easy and you guys do a nice job, so thank you.
Rhonda?
By the time you get to me, everything's been said, so ditto. That's all I got.
Yeah, and I, I too want to thank you for coming. You know, it's an hour out of your, out of your night, but thank you for coming in and choosing us to be the meeting that you attend. Thanks to all of our students for the work that they put in to present to us each week and especially the presentation on school safety. That was really informative, so thank you very much. And lastly, I just want to comment, a lot of, a lot of things that were said tonight that we're doing at Wabash is giving back to the community. Almost 3,900 items raised for, for Fish, $600 raised, a blood drive, which is vitally needed in our community, raising over $700 for Riley, we've done upcoming toy drive, and then over $2,300 by our staff raised for the United Fund, which the money raised for United Fund stays in the local community. So Wabash High School is giving back to the community. I think that's great that we're teaching our students and the future members of, of the community here that it's important to give back to the community that they live in. So thank you to everybody involved in that. Very much appreciated. Did I see you?
Last one, and I, you guys collected cans and money for Fish also.
You guys are busy. I see you guys every Friday.
We were, that was our goal, was to collect cans for Fish. We collected cans and monetary donations for Fish, Transfrom Consulting. They were doubling our monetary donation and then they were also giving 25 cents per item that was donated. And that's going to go to Fish also. So we're wrapping up a lot of badges this week. Caroling for Cans and then our Democracy and, like I said, our Government Badge, which, girls, all of this, what they are talking about, like, is being an active citizen, which is a huge part of both of those badges. So it's the small things like, that you don't realize that improves your community and being an active citizen is one of those.
Absolutely. If, if we aren't willing to give back to our community, nobody else is going to step up and do it for us. So thank you to everybody involved.
Where's, what's caroling for cans? And where do you do that?
It's just a Girl Scout bag that you can, and so that's what they did Friday night. We were out in front of the Welcome Center and we sang Christmas carols while we handed out candy canes. And then we were collecting the money and.
I didn't know if you were going to go to people's houses and I was going to like volunteer.
And then we also got some extra candy canes, which I needed to discuss with the girls because their parents donated so many candy canes. We had an abundance. I was going to ask them what they thought about doing with those. And what I thought about doing with them would be, I didn't know if you would like to entertain the idea of donating to the Department of Children and Family Services for kids that don't necessarily, might not get candy canes or so. But we can talk about that anyways.
Thank you. All right, and with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.